Good morning. We're going to get started. As you can see, we are operating under somewhat different circumstances today. I just want to read a brief statement. After consulting with our Department of Health, we have made several changes to council's regular routine today. This will likely continue until further notice from the Department of Health. With respects to the process, it is obviously based on the concerns about the coronavirus. You will notice that we have every other chair blocked. That's a part of the social distancing strategy that we have put in place based on those recommendations. We want to reduce any potential exposure. We ask you, please not panic, but it's important for us to be cautious and follow the science and the recommendations. We will not allow anybody to stand alone. We have moved our caucus, as you have just witnessed, from the caucus room to the chambers. That caucus room lends itself to potential exposure because of the closeness of the traditional operation of caucus. So we want to make sure that as we continue to proceed, that we follow that policy. I ask if anybody here has some certain symptoms. If you are feeling feverish, if you have a persistent dry cough, if you are short of breath, you obviously have potentially some health challenges. So we would ask you to leave for your benefit and for everyone in the room. Again, we don't want to panic anyone, but we do want to be responsible and follow the recommendations. So thank you very much. We will change also our public comment process. We will continue to have public comment because we think it's important to give people an opportunity to voice their opinion about legislation. But we will change the process because the transmission is what I'm being told and what the professionals are telling us can be transmitted by droplets, i.e. any moisture coming from individuals' mouths. It could potentially be on the microphone. So we're going to ask individuals to stand back at least three feet from the microphone. We understand that it may be a little different difficulty in terms of hearing, but we ask that you please adhere to those particular guidelines because they are important because individuals will be coming up one after another. So again, we want to give you an opportunity to speak, but we want to make sure that we're prudent in terms of being able to continue that policy. If you do not wish to be a part of the public comment session, you can always submit your testimony. It will be put in the record as a matter of record and subsequently in the council journal. I just want to thank you all so much for your cooperation as we are clearly in some difficult times to some degree unprecedented. So we're asking everybody to please be cautious, please wash your hands, and please follow the science and the recommendation of the health professionals. So thank you very much, and we probably need this today more so than any. To give my invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Minister Rashawn Carlton of the Church of Christian Compassion. She is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
Amen. Good morning. Good morning. I'm honored to be here and thank you, Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore, for inviting me. So let's look to the Lord. Father, in the name of Jesus, Heavenly Father, we pause right now just to give you praise and just to thank you for this moment right here. We want to pray and thank you for covering and keeping us. And right now, in the mighty name of Jesus, I ask, Father, that you would touch every one of your leaders right now. Father, you did not give them a spirit of fear, but you have given them power, love, and a sound mind. Now, God, as we go forward and we're dealing with this coronavirus, we know that we can handle anything in prayer. So, Father, I pray in the name of Jesus that you would give your leaders wisdom like no other, that you would give them peace that would surpass their understanding. I pray right now that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them guidance in the name of Jesus, that we would know exactly what to do. And, God, I pray for this city, oh, God, that we will be obedient to what the leaders have put in place because, God, you have put them in place. So, God, I thank you for leaders that operate in integrity. I thank you for leaders that operate in the authority that you have given them. God, I thank you that you are doing something new in this atmosphere and with your leaders. So, Father, I thank you for this meeting right here, that it will be none other, oh, God, in the name of Jesus. Father, we thank you, we give you praise, and we give you honor, and it's in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen? God bless.
Amen. Thank you very much for those very inspiring words. We genuinely need them today. Thank you. Counselor, be at ease. Boom. There you go. Whoa. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 5, 2020, and the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, March 5, 2020, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moving probably second, that the meeting of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 5, 2020, stand approved. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that Journal is approved. At our next order of business is request for a leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. This time, I would like to dispense with a regular order of business and just welcome and thank everyone who has come to council today to witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope that your stay is a knowledgeable one and more so a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So thank you very much. Today, we have no presentations. So our next order of business is communications, and the chair requests that the Sargent of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. And, Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on March 11, 2020, I signed Bill Number 200117, and I am returning without my signature, Bill Number 20016, both of which were passed by council on February 27, 2020. And that on March 11, 2020, I signed all the bills that were passed by council on March 5, 2020, except Bill Number 20019, which I am returning without my signature. And I am submitting herewith to the consideration of your honorable body a resolution appointing Jack Soloff to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a resolution reappointing Randall Scott to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2020 from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Managing Director, and to the General Fund to certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance submitting Section 2303 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Salaries of Specified Officers to Establish Salaries Based on an Annual Compensation Plan, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. This time, we will have the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill on your behalf, one bill on my behalf that is co-sponsored by members Gilmore Richardson, Brooks, Gautier, Bass, along with Squilla, Gimm, Sanchez, Johnson, Green, Thomas, Jones, and yourself.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And I wish to be recognized after the title is read.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance submitting Chapter 9, 1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance: Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination. To clarify that unlawful discrimination includes discrimination based on characteristics such as hair texture and hairstyles. And an ordinance submitting Section 2303 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Salaries of Specified Officers to Establish Salaries Based on an Annual Compensation Plan.
Those two ordinances will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes, I'm sorry, chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as a young black girl growing up, being raised by my grandparents, I can remember, as young as four years old, sitting between her legs, getting my hair plaited and/or braided, and she would constantly note the importance of taking care of your crown. And that is not just a cultural experience that I am familiar with, but every black girl across this nation and across this world knows what a special cultural experience, I will refer to it as, getting your hair done. And it was during our, I think, first or second session here in council, I looked back at my colleagues, Councilwoman Brooks and Councilwoman Gautier, and they had beautiful braided hairstyles. Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson had our sort of travel, wet and wavy. And for those of you who don't know, I had my nice jacket in, don't pull it too hard. And I thought to myself, Mr. President, that we here in this body are welcomed when we have our hair in different styles, and it communicates different expressions about what we are and what we feel. And we are allowed to be members of this body without being discriminated against when we are out there campaigning amongst the public relative to our hair. So today, I am proud to introduce what I consider to be the local version of the CROWN Act. And for those of you who may not be familiar, CROWN is an acronym that stands for Creating a Respectful and Open World for Natural Hair. What this bill would do is amend the code to clarify that unlawful discrimination on the basis of race includes discrimination based on characteristics commonly associated with race, such as hair textures and styles. The legislation would ban hair discrimination in housing, employment, school, competitive sports, and beyond. If, in fact, this council decides to pass this legislation, we would, in effect, become the first city in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to adopt such a law, and we would also be adjoining a growing list of states and other jurisdictions that have either introduced and/or adopted legislation banning hair discrimination. Now, I do want to note for the record and say a specific thanks to our colleagues in the General Assembly, specifically Democratic Caucus Chair Joanna McClinton, along with our Democratic Appropriations Chairman Vincent Hughes, and the Senate, who are also working on this legislation at the state level. I also have to thank Rue Landau on the Commission of Human Relations. Rue, thank you for your guidance and your assistance in working to get the legislation moving and drafted and comparing and contrast where Philadelphia would stand and what we were proposing compared to other jurisdictions. For those of you who don't know, hair discrimination is still very much a reality for black people. Earlier this year, you'll remember, Black Sooton in Pittsburgh was told that he would be suspended from school or even kept from graduating if he did not cut his locks. In October 2019, a Penn State University football player, he received a letter from an alumnus of Penn State stating that his quote-unquote "locks" looked disgusting and are certainly not attractive. And there have been other recent high-profile instances at the national level, too. You'll remember the New Jersey wrestler who was forced to cut his locks before he could participate in a match that he went on to win. Kudos to him. And we can't forget actress Gabrielle Union, who was told on multiple occasions that her hairstyles were, in effect, too black for America's Got Talent. As a black woman, I personally understand how we've been forced to conform to mainstream standards of beauty for decades. I'm proud to witness more and more women embracing their natural beauty and rejecting the need to fit into what we call a makeshift frame that was once defined what beauty was and what was acceptable. It's about accepting who we are and loving who we are. For anyone who would attempt to minimize this legislation and say that it is just about hair, it's not just about hair, it's also about culture. And I want to thank my colleagues who co-sponsored this legislation today. I look forward to working with you to make it a reality in the future. And just have to state, as a matter of personal privilege, my son Langston, following in the footsteps of his dad, actually locked last year. He's coming up on his second year, and he wants a ponytail, but it hasn't grown long enough yet for a ponytail. So he just has to wait for it. When we pass this legislation, it will make me feel confident enough to know that Langston, who is now seven, he'll be eight this year when he gets older. Even if he's able to grow into that ponytail, he won't be discriminated against in school, in housing, in competitive sports, or anything in the City of Philadelphia, and that will be because this local government made a decision to include it in its anti-discrimination laws. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce one non-privileged resolution on your behalf and one privileged resolution signed by all members of city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution encouraging the National Committee of the Young Democrats of America to hold their 2021 bicentennial convention in the City of Philadelphia.
Day's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1421 Letterly Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have one non-privileged resolution would like to be recognized upon its reading.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution calling on the Philadelphia Sheriff's Office, the First Judicial District of Pennsylvania, and area utility companies to explore moratoriums on evictions, residential foreclosures, tax liens, our residential properties, and utility shut-offs in response to the COVID-19 health emergency.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
That's okay. Thank you very much, Council President. I know these are somber and uncertain times for all of us as a city. This resolution talks about what it looks like when we come together instead of pulling apart in a time of fear and uncertainty. You know, we as local leaders have to understand that our public health is also tied to economic security, and this is particularly important when we're dealing in a public health emergency in which those who are most vulnerable, least economically secure, and least covered by social services are essential to our public health, and we have to do all that we can to make sure that people are going to be in stable housing and will have full access to utilities in event of a public health emergency. You know, over the last several weeks, cities and municipalities have had to grapple with things that should really be the purview of the federal government, and it is extraordinarily unfortunate that the federal government has chosen instead to peddle in untruths to mask a significant amount of incompetency. And I do want to specifically note that the xenophobia and anti-Asian sentiments exhibited by the occupant of the White House, particularly in reference to the coronavirus disease and COVID-19, has been appalling and is untrue and results in people not having appropriate information or getting appropriate testing as needed. Nevertheless, that means that we as a city have to come together to lead a bold and efficient response that protects the safety of all our residents, and that's in part why we're calling upon and asking my colleagues to call upon our responsible agencies to explore a temporary moratorium on evictions, mortgage foreclosures, and utility shut-offs in the event of a COVID-19 public health outbreak and emergency here in the City of Philadelphia. We already have the support of our sheriff. Miami Police has just announced a suspension of evictions under their purview. San Jose and San Francisco are also moving. Other cities are also talking about this, and it's serious. And so our feeling is that we have long believed in this body. We have taken tremendous measures to keep people housing secure, and even more so now in this public health crisis. We believe that housing is a human right, and no one should have to choose between their own safety, their health, and the ability to keep a roof over their heads. I want to thank my co-sponsors, councilmembers Brooks, Gautier, Johnson, Thomas, Gilmore Richardson, Heenan, Kenyonne Sanchez, Bass, and Jones, and others. And I also want to thank our sheriff, Rochelle Bilal, who is committed to taking a look at this issue very seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Milner Street from Bye Avenue to New State Road.
Vered to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three privileged resolutions, one non-privileged resolution, and two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the paving of Parker Avenue from a point approximately 156 feet southwest of Mathia Street to a point approximately 186 feet further northwesterly therefrom.
Vered to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number 299 by striking from the City Plan Parker Avenue from a point approximately 342 feet southwest of Mathia Street to its terminus approximately 58 feet further northwesterly therefrom.
Vered to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the United Age Group Track Coaches Association for over 40 years of dedication to the development of young athletes through the sport of track and field.
Day's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings to investigate the Police Board of Inquiry's disciplinary process within this Philadelphia Police Department.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Defender Association of Philadelphia for their tireless pursuit of justice for our indigent population and designated the day of March 18, 2020, as Public Defense Day in the City of Philadelphia.
Also today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the Philadelphia Police Department, as well as state and federal law enforcement officials, to establish clear boundaries and issue transparent policies regarding the use of facial recognition technology to ensure that this technology does not lead to racial biases in policing practices and outcomes or infringe on individual civil liberties.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one bill, one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
An ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of Manson Street.
Vered to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing bringing hope home for providing years of emotional and financial support to local families with cancer.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kenyonne Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2020 from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Managing Director, and to the General Fund to certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
Vered to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. For the record, I have laryngitis. I had to make it clear, my voice has been struggling for two weeks. So I'm clear. I have laryngitis. I have two, I have one bill, I'm sorry, one privilege and one non-privileged resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And I would like to be recognized at the end briefly.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on People with Disabilities and Special Needs to Hold Public Hearings Regarding the Parental Rights of Parents with Disabilities.
That will be on today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the City of Philadelphia to Develop an Action Plan and Guidance to Support and Protect Service and Healthcare Workers from the potentially devastating impacts of the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic.
And that will be on next week's calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
First, I would like to acknowledge, last night, watching the game, and when the suspension came up, everyone was upset about the NBA being suspended. I was concerned about my friends and family that work down at the stadiums and how that would impact their life and taking care of their families. So it's important that this plan is established, and there's some significance to that. In part two, I would like to recognize two young people that I worked with throughout my 17 years working at East of Sills of Southeastern Pennsylvania around a resolution around hearings for people with disabilities to be able to have children and have a quality of life. So this bill is, this resolution is significant to me because I had to stand up and fight with these young women to keep their children early on, and needless to say, their children are like five and seven now? Nine, wow! And they're living happily at home with their families, and we need to make sure that people with disabilities have the respect to be able to have families and love on them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gautier.
Good morning, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today, but I did want to just take a minute to briefly recognize the young people from the Leaders of Tomorrow, who was actually invited by nobody to come down to city councils today. They just came down here because they recognize that their community has problems, and they want to do their best to address those issues specifically for teenagers. So those young people, can you just take a second to stand up real quick so we can recognize you?
Thank you, Councilman, and welcome, and thank you all for coming down. We appreciate you. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills and two non-privileged resolutions, co-sponsored with you.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the construction, installation, ownership, use, and maintenance of an open-air sidewalk cafe at 901 through 25 North Delaware Avenue.
Vered to committee.
And an ordinance demanding Title IV of Subcode A of the Philadelphia Code to revise certain provisions of Chapter IV permits and amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14, 300, and administration and procedures by amending terms and conditions of administrative review.
And bills referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Jack Soloff to the Board of Directors of the Center City District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution reappointing Randall Scott to the Board of Directors of the Center City District.
Actually, will be referred to committee along with the prior, the aforementioned resolution. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer two privileged, two privileged resolutions, one non-privileged resolution, co-introduced by councilmembers Green, Squilla, yourself, Heenan, and Bass, and may be heard after reading of the title of the non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the 80th anniversary of the Philadelphia Youth Orchestra.
And that will be on today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating the Academy of Vocal Arts on the occasion of its 85th anniversary, 1934, through 2020.
Also on today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the School District of Philadelphia and the State Board of Education to temporarily suspend the requirement to provide a doctor's note after three days of absence during the coronavirus outbreak.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. So there's a lot said by various experts about the coronavirus. It's to be taken seriously. It's to be taken seriously, carefully, but, you know, they really warn against overreactions that are not carefully thought out. One of them, Michael Osterholm, Director of the Center for Infectious Disease Research and Policy at the University of Minnesota, has been recognized as someone who's predicted the coronavirus in this format, coming from China to the United States and around the world. One of the things that he's really kind of emphasized is a thoughtful process. This is, in his opinion, an airborne virus, and as such, he really emphasizes the need to ensure that our, our community is functioning and that our healthcare systems are working. And one of the things he urges, since children, young children, do not appear to be susceptible to the symptoms of the coronavirus, that we be very careful about the adults, so that healthcare workers are not compromised. For example, simply closing schools, which we can close schools, but, but to be careful about that, then requires people who work in the healthcare industry, whether they be secretaries or people who clean the rooms, or nurses, administrators, doctors, they have to then provide childcare. And that may actually lower the opportunity to provide healthcare to those who need it. In terms of our schools, children who are sick, while not likely to be injured from the coronavirus, do carry it. And, and they can then transmit it to adults in the school, or to people at home and others. And so, during this time, I would hope that parents be given the opportunity that if their children appear to be sick, that they keep them at home to protect the adults around them, themselves, as well as others. And that, during this time, would require, or hopefully, the, the school district and the State Board of Education would consider that parents have the capability to understand that if their children are not feeling well, they're exhibiting some type of underlying system, symptoms, to keep them at home without penalty that affects them academically and, and otherwise. The final note on that is this: for people who are not, you know, who are adults, could be young adults or others, it would be really recommended that they maintain their health, not get an underlying sickness such as a cold or flu, and that, and then get the coronavirus on top of that. And that's really, I think, what his message has been, that it is coming, we have to accept that it's coming, try to maintain your health, and in that part, I think, try to maintain that our society is functioning, our healthcare workers are there, and that we carefully consider what to do with education, our children, and those adults working in the education field. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen, and that will be on next week's calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports from committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee on License and Inspection.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on License and Inspections reports two bills out with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on License and Inspections, to which is referred Bill Number 200116, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9 of the, of Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code, and titled additional special requirements to establish requirements for managers of certain buildings pertaining to identification of occupants, to better assist responders during emergency situations. And Bill Number 200147, entitled an ordinance amending Subcode F of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code, entitled the Philadelphia Fire Code, to establish limitations on the use of hydrogen fluoride and hydrofluoric acid. Respectfully reports it as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading of this day. Bill Numbers 200116 and 200147.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 200, 200116 and 200147. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee of Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is referred Bill Number 200189, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 6, 1100 of the Philadelphia Code, and titled nuisance health establishments, by adding a definition for supervised injection sites, creating a presumption that they are nuisance health establishments, and establishing criteria to obtain the support of the, of the community by requiring a hearing before city council. Respectfully reports, it has considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 200189.
Second. Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 200189. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is a consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have their first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions that are on our final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are Numbers 200226, 200227, and 200010. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much. Prior, prior to acting on these bills and resolutions that are on our final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. As I indicated earlier, we please ask that any individual who wishes to speak, please adhere to our recommendations that you stand, no less than three feet from the microphone as a result of, per recommendations of the Health Department as relates to the possibility of transmitting any potential coronavirus. In addition to that, when your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Again, please adhere to the Health Department's recommendation with respect to distancing from the microphone. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Joe Denahell, commenting on 200226.
Good morning.
This is an official decree of the people. Remandamis quorum arto, as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to government, probably unlawfully. Does council refuse to listen to the government hearings here assembled as required by oath, constitution, and law? Does government have documented consent to deny any public comment or use federal low-income housing money to build a mall on top of my stolen home? Solving the poverty problem requires the government stop stealing the people's property. My 26 years of government-created help requires immediate remedy. Your failure to perform your known duty or task requires prosecution. The constitutions require immediate remedy in this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C., 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C., 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 28, 26 P.A., C.S.A., 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 14133, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C., 1982 property rights for 26 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violated, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charge of government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitution, and law be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath, constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of operation to create and allow all this monumental corruption.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Phil Glover, commenting on 200227.
Morning.
So my name is National Vice President Phil Glover from the American Federation of Government Employees, and also we're part of the Philadelphia Central Labor Council. I simply came to thank councilmembers Green, Johnson, Heenan, Squilla, Gilmore Richardson, Brooks, Gautier, and Jim for the introduction of 200227, supporting our collective bargaining rights against the Trump administration. You have the privilege of over 20,000 federal workers in the city of Philadelphia. They are parts of the EPA, they are part of SSA, VA, VBA, Bureau Prisons, the National Park Service on Independence, USDA, and others. These employees deserve bargaining rights like all other workers do, and we certainly want to thank the council. I want to thank Pat Eiding for his leadership from the Central Labor Council for asking you to look at this issue and acting upon it. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment session. We will now move to our calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 200226.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Reid Valmont Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements are on situated in the 18th ward of the city of Philadelphia with addresses on the 1600 block of North Bodine Street.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kenyonne Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution Number 200226 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, 200227.
A resolution calling upon the Trump administration to uphold the collective bargaining rights of federal workers.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank the Speaker during public comment for supporting this resolution that we introduced in council a few weeks ago. In addition to being a member of this body, I serve as the Labor Chair for organization, national organization called Democratic Municipal Officials. We were just in DC for a couple days in addition to learning how to do the Corona bump. We also had a number of meetings and gatherings during the National Cities Annual Congressional Cities Conference. I was joined by our past President of National Cities, Councilmember Brian O'Neal, as well as Councilmember Jamie Gautier, who was at the conference. It was through these conferences where I learned different ideas and concerns, especially in reference to collective bargaining. This has been an issue, there's been assault on collective bargaining, unfortunately by this administration, especially for our federal employees. Early part of this year, we had a labor roundtable, cities jobs and labor roundtable here in Philadelphia at the Philadelphia AFL-CIO. A number of members of council attended, really to create a better bond between labor and our local elected officials, and that's where I learned about this issue. So in addition to passing this resolution here in the city of Philadelphia, I'm encouraging my colleagues who are members of Democratic Municipal Officials to bring this type of resolution to their jurisdictions around the Commonwealth to send a message to the administration that all people should have the ability to organize collectively, especially our federal employees. Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution 200227 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 200010.
An ordinance authorizing the Procurement Department on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into one or more agreements with a vendor or vendors for the purchase and servicing of online legal, legal research services, investigative tools, and related goods and services.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. Your question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Brooks, Councilman Don, Councilwoman Gautier, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, Councilman Green, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O, Councilman O'Neal, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kenyonne Sanchez, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Thomas, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are 17, and the names are zero, which are the members present, voting in in front of the, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and honoring the United Age Group Track Coaches Association for over 40 years of dedication to the development of young athletes through the sport of track and field, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we vote, I want to acknowledge two things. One, it was co-signed by Parker and Green, and Councilmember Parker has a young lad that is active within that Track Coaches Association, and I can only tell you that there are no murders in that group, just good boys. There are no fights within that group, just good girls. A thousand athletes gather every Saturday without incident, without press, without any of those kinds of concerns. No drugs, just good coaches that volunteer their time to do that. They go unheralded throughout the decades, producing athletes that wind up all around the world and inclusive of the Olympics. They are a Philadelphia product that we should treasure, right down with cheesesteaks, water rices, and soft pretzels, the United Age Group Track Coaches Association. I enthusiastically move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings to investigate the police board of inquiry's disciplinary process within the Philadelphia Police Department, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Defender Association of Philadelphia for their tireless pursuit of justice for indigent population and designated the day of March 18, 2020 as Public Defense Day in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing bringing hope home for providing years of emotional and financial support to local families with cancer, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on People with Disabilities and Special Needs to hold public hearings regarding the parental rights of parents with disabilities, introduced by Councilwoman Brooks.
Councilman Green, did you want to be recognized?
Record and vote on Councilmember Jones' resolution while it's out of the chambers.
Okay. Let the record reflect that. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules be adopted.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the And a resolution recognizing and honoring the eightieth anniversary of the Philadelphia Youth Orchestra, introduced by Councilman O.
Did you say O?
Introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. Move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating the Academy of Vocal Arts on the occasion of its eighty-fifth anniversary, nineteen thirty-four through two thousand twenty, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? And speakers on behalf of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just a brief announcement, I was hosting a Peace Not Guns Town Hall meeting this evening at McDaniel Middle School from six PM to eight PM, and so that event will be canceled this evening just due to the current situation that we're dealing with regarding the coronavirus, and so rather be safe than sorry. Also, I had a event tomorrow in the mayor's reception room regarding Peace Not Guns with some young people, and also going to cancel that event. That event was supposed to start at ten AM, and so that event is going to be canceled as well. I want to be safe, as well as, as opposed to being sorry, and hopefully, I know we will get through this as a city, as a people, and we just have to stick together while we go through this process, and I know we'll make it through on the other side. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
To President, I too want to announce a cancellation that is on today at three PM in conjunction with the Board of Pensions, along with the Finance Department of the Administration. We had a Philadelphia Pension System briefing scheduled for today in partnership with your office and the technical staff, and that briefing will be rescheduled. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I forgot and was reminded that I too have a cancellation. Today, after council at one o'clock, there was supposed to be a, a hearing of the Music Industry Task Force. We had a lot of people coming, and on, for that reason, we did postpone it. It'll be rescheduled later, but that hearing is canceled. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, you know, just in line of the many cancellations and the sacrifices of all the hard work that the men and women and this body had put together for the betterment of our city and moving our city forward, and, and all its preparedness, you know, I want to thank the city, I want to thank you, Council President, I want to thank each member for being so attentive to, you know, public, public safety and public health. You know, I too want to, you know, and it's been out there, the St. Patrick's Day Observance Board, the Parade Committee has self-cancelated, you know, canceled the parade and all its affiliated activities, which is, you know, really going to have a huge economic impact in, on the, the economy in this year as we celebrate our two-hundred-and-fiftieth, two-hundred-and-fiftieth year anniversary, which we will have the opportunity to celebrate next year in the two thousand twenty-one, St. Patrick's Day Parade. I just really want to thank, you know, our Board President, John Stevenson, our Director of our parade, Michael Bradley, who happens to be the Grand Marshall this year, to, you know, putting the public's health and welfare first and wellness, you know, in front of, you know, celebrating our, our traditions, our, our faith and family tradition here in its twenty-four, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. It was not an easy decision because there were so many events wrapped around, there's around St. Patrick's Day as we, you know, approach St. Patrick's Day, but there, you know, typically you have twenty thousand parade, you know, watchers and participants, two hundred brigades, and, and, and bodies and associations that have prepared all year long in, in advance to celebrate this anniversary. So I just really want to, you know, you know, thank them and, you know, give them, you know, all the credit that they deserve in, you know, putting the public first and, and the safety, working, you know, with this administration and this body to make sure, or as we work through this, you know, COVID-nineteen, you know, we, you know, we're prepared and we're doing the right thing. So I want to congratulate and thank everybody working together to make sure that we, you know, feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. That appears to conclude these speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. And with that, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty, at ten AM.
Thank you. It has been moved and, second, that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty, at ten AM. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.